Now, I have to admit, I'm a bit of a street art nerd. I won't talk about my actions as a teenager, but I really, really like street art. And, you know, not all street art is created equal. I think we're used to seeing just the taggings, right? When people just put up their names. But there's throw-ups, there's bombs, there's pieces, there's murals. And then there's the art that LMAC has done across the city and across the world.
I really appreciate it, and I'm also, you know, honored to be in such esteemed company. I was already familiar with Councilman Martinez, and I'm also, you know, familiar with Marquise Harris-Dawson and McCosker and a few others. So I'm, you know, I'm always pretty skeptical of politicians, no offense, but, you know...
You should be, you should be.
You know, it's...
You're not alone.
But I know there's some good ones, so hey, you know. But yeah, I'm grateful to be here and thank you again.
Councilmember Padilla.
Yes, I also want to thank Councilmember Soto Martinez for bringing LMAC here. You know, I, when I saw that we were honoring you, I immediately, I'm glad you got here, Monica, because I was going to allude to, you know, in the San Fernando Valley, we have this growing thing called the Van Nuys Mural Mile. And I was right out of college when the muralists of that stretch started, right? You have Levi Ponce, Kristi Sandoval, and of course, Mr. Manny. Manny, who is my mentor from a long time. And when I started to ask them, well, who do you guys admire? Who do you guys want to see be part of this movement? They said LMAC. You have, we have to someday bring LMAC to Van Nuys Boulevard, because you're not just an artist that artists respect. Well, they respect you, but what they admire is that you're doing your work with aerosol. So you've elevated the work of what you, somebody, an artist can do with a spray can. So I thank you for adding that classiness and elevating that tool as something that can also be utilized to create high-end art. So congratulations on your recognition today. Continue to paint. It's a whole new generation in Los Angeles. We now have a mural ordinance that we didn't have 30 years ago, and I look forward to seeing your stuff be in more walls and more districts. And again, thank you for the work that you do, and thank you for elevating the work and the utilization of aerosol.
Thank you so much for those wonderful words. And, you know, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we want to give you this recognition for all the contributions you've done for the city, your beautiful art, your humbleness, and all your leadership in this field. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Andrew Rudick for item number 19, and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Please begin with the item. I listened to the city council speak about compliance and oversight yesterday, and this motion addresses neither in an immediate fashion for this issue. This motion wouldn't change anything while waiting for maybe months for a response back from the city attorney, except washing your hands clean of any input regarding naming rights on our city's most iconic street while ongoing violations occur. The city hasn't followed its own official policy pertaining to star additions on the Walk of Fame outline in council file 78-3949 for years. Councilmember Blumenfield's and Lee's offices confirmed that to me yesterday yet again in their responses to a CPRA request. The Bureau of Engineering has granted a permit to the contractor Top End Taratzo without city council approval for a while now, because the central district engineer, after consulting with the city attorney, emailed me last February that they'd correct that process. Are we to believe that no one from the city attorney's office has looked at the municipal code referenced in that council file since then, or then, rather? Ted Jordan emailed his colleagues in the city attorney's office last June about that council file and asked the office to come up with a formal opinion on the language within weeks. I had assumed that the city was following its own laws. An individual told me a few days ago that it was a tacit understanding to turn their head from certain code violations on projects because of political pressure. And in so many words, they told me that efforts, my efforts for compliance wouldn't go anywhere. I can only guess that when I hear that from so many city officials that I should speak to a certain 501(c)(6) organization about the city resource and property of the cities that is the Walk of Fame, that that's the reason. The truth of the matter is, in my opinion, the city has broken the law. Your own motion acknowledges the Board of Public Works' mandated requirement, not any other agency, but the governing body to approve the permits for the Walk of Fame, and now you're proposing, at least implicitly, that the Board of Public Works should also weigh in on cultural issues concerning the dedication of future controversial names on our public right-of-way after years of not fulfilling basic obligations for permitting. Donald Trump's name was illegally installed on the Walk of Fame, and it needs to be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Meredith Brown, and I'm legal counsel for the migrant, the Guatemalan migrant network. And I'm here in support of the City of Los Angeles proclamation in favor of TPS for Guatemala. This will be a historic move for the City of Los Angeles. I wanted to congratulate you for being leaders. We have many cities that today are looking towards your leadership on this issue. It is completely unjust and unacceptable that Nicaragua, Honduras, El Salvador have TPS. They've had it for 25 years plus, and in many cases Guatemala has suffered injustices beyond the pale. We wanted to especially thank Walter Batres, who is the president of the Guatemalan Migrant Network, along with many other leaders behind this movement. And we are very confident, after visiting Washington, D.C., and Ciudad de Guatemala with President Arébolo, that we will achieve this goal that is 30 years overdue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you for your leadership. Good to see you.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Andrés Cruz. Soy Maya Cangobal.
Good morning. My name is Andrés Cruz, and I am Maya Cangobal.
Vengo de Phoenix, Arizona.
I'm coming from Phoenix, Arizona.
A pedirle a los concejales de Los Ángeles a que aprueben esta proclamación para un TPS guatemalteco, ya que nosotros somos productos...
So I'm here to ask the council today to approve this proclamation for TPS, since we are...
Se continúa señor. Nosotros somos productos de la guerra interna de Guatemala.
We are a product of the internal wars that happened in Guatemala.
Pero actualmente también somos víctimas de la corrupción que vive en nuestro país.
But we are also, at this point, we are victims of the corruption that our country's undergoing.
Por lo cual venimos a pedir el apoyo total de los concejales de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles.
That is why we come to request for the absolute support from the council members from the City of Los Angeles.
Ya que nosotros en ese momento no podemos regresar a nuestro país en las condiciones políticas, sociales, económicas que vive Guatemala.
Since we cannot go back to our country due to the situation, the social, economic, financial situations that our country is undergoing.
Con esta proclamación nos apoyaría para parar las deportaciones y tener garantía de un trabajo, de un seguro social, y estaríamos colaborando.
This proclamation would help us to stop the deportations, and we would be able to have a status where we could have work, and we can have a salary, and we can... Sí señor.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Hola, mi nombre es Domingo David Oxla. Tengo 26 años en Los Ángeles, California, here in the United States.
My name is Domingo David Oxla, and I've been 26 years here in the United States.
Soy de la comunidad Maya Quiche de Guatemala.
And I'm from the Mayan Quiche community from Guatemala.
Hemos sido marginados.
We've been marginalized.
Por los políticos.
By the politicians.
Ahora...
And now?
Pido a todos los concejales.
I want to ask to all the council members.
Que aprueben.
To approve.
El apoyo.
The support.
Un TPS para todos los guatemaltecos.
A TPS for all the Guatemaltecs.
No podemos regresar.
We cannot come back.
Tenemos hijos acá en Estados Unidos.
We have children here in the United States.
Mi niña va a cumplir 18 años.
My daughter is almost 18.
Ella va a votar por mí.
And she will vote for me.
Parece de una depresión.
She is suffering a depression.
Por un TPS.
Because of a TPS.
Me ayuda a una deportación.
Oh, that's going to help to prevent the deportation. I cannot go back to my country.
Por la inseguridad.
Because of the insecurity.
Por las extorsiones.
The extorsions.
Y los políticos.
And because of the politicians.
That they are doing their own thing. Vengo a pedirles a todos los concejales.
So I am requesting all the council members.
Que aprueben esta proclamación por un TPS.
To please approve the proclamation for a TPS.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Emil Sabautista. I lived in Dallas, Texas for 35 years. I'm a businesswoman, and I have six businesses in the United States. I have many houses, but I don't have papers to stay here. I asking to hear if they can provide a TPS for all the Guatemala people. I have three kids, they grew up here. My kids vote for me, but I wish to vote one day. If I back to my country, we owe everything I have here, and I'll be surviving there five days. Because if, in Guatemala, if you have money and business, they asking you to pay, and they killing you. So I just asking, please, if they can provide a paper for Guatemala people. We work so hard, and we don't ask for anything else. I just want to stay here legal and continue working and continuing with this country too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good morning, everyone. My name is Edgar Chah, and I'm going to say in my language, Maya Quiche, Saqri Congel. Buenos dias a todos, y bueno, mi nombre es Edgar Chah de nuevo, de la comunidad Maya Quiche. Estamos aquí pues para pedirles de todo corazón a todos los concejales que nos apoyan con un TPS en nombre de toda la comunidad guatemalteca.
I'm here to request to the council members to please support us wholeheartedly with a TPS for all the community from Guatemala.
Ya que hemos sido, pues, víctimas de una guerra como los hermanos han expresado.
Since we have been victims of a war, as my brothers have just said.
Agradecerle también al concejal Kevin De León por el gran apoyo que nos ha brindado.
I also want to say thank you to the council.
Esperamos el mismo apoyo de...
Councilmember Kevin De León with the support that he gave us, and we are expecting the same kind of support.
hacia ustedes también, a todos los concejales que están presentes, y todos los que nos puedan apoyar, y pues, los que pueden escuchar esto desde Casablanca, el presidente de Estados Unidos, Joe Biden.
And from all of you, and from all those who can like support us, and even to the White House and the President Joe Biden, we are requesting to please...
Que nos apoya con TPS, y pues, agradecidos en nombre de toda la comunidad guatemalteca. Gracias.
To support us with a TPS, and of course, we are very grateful in the name of the whole community from Guatemala.
Our items. My name's Alex DiAlvarado.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items.
Perfect. So I'm here in solidarity with my Guatemalan community. Personally, my family fled Guatemala.
So, Speaker, this is not on the agenda, but you can speak to it during general public comment. So would you like to have just...
I'm here in solidarity with the TPS for the Guatemalan community, and I'm just here to express...
Okay, so I'm going to give you one minute for general public comment.
Excuse me?
You have one minute for general public comment.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, like I was saying, my family fled from Guatemala 30 years ago, and here we are so many years later, fighting for a TPS or some type of protection. It's very interesting that other ethnic groups have representation like that, and we contribute to the City of Los Angeles, and we constantly keep pushing. And I just want to let you guys know that, you know, our people are constantly being harassed and constantly being deported and constantly being, you know, arrested by LAPD on different parts of the city, and a lot has to do with them not having protection. And I'm here also to let you guys know that, just like we flee discrimination and prosecution, you know, we're getting the same backlash from certain council members in this same district. And, you know, my name's Alex, and, you know, I just wanted to tell you guys that it's very sad, but that will come to light soon. Alexander Wax, CD1 speaks.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
My name is Richard Hernandez Chase, general public comment.
So you have one minute. Please begin.
My family's been the operator and owners of a business known as La Carreta, down the street on Alvaro Street. We have been there for 57 years. I have personally operated that business for the last 37 years. Recently, five years ago, my mother submitted the proper paperwork for me to be included in the contract that we signed in 2011. For the last five years, the management did nothing, took no action, never had any communications with me in regards to my name being put on that contract. Three weeks ago, my mother passed away. Five days later, I was served with notice to vacate the premises after being there for the last 57 years. I've reached out to my councilmen, I've reached out to the city attorney's office, I've reached out to management. Nobody seems to want to help me. I'm here today, I would like to have this body of government to please look into a resolution so my family can maintain this legacy that's been there for 37 years, 57 years. Thank you.
Realmente yo soy mexicano, pero amo bastante a la gente de Guatemala porque tengo muchísimos amigos.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Reyes, and I'm really, I'm actually Mexican, but I'm here because I really love the Guatemaltecan people.
Yeah, y solo le pido el apoyo a los concejales de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles que apoyen a esto para el que, del TPS, para...
I just want to ask the council members from the City of Los Angeles to support the PTS.
Para que podramos, podremos regresar con seguridad y por, sin riesgos, y vivir en este país. Muchas gracias.
So we can live in this country, and we can go back in a safe way and without any issues. Yeah. Gracias señor.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Muy buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Miguel Pu. Soy originario de Guatemala.
Very good morning to everybody. My name is Miguel Pu, and I'm originally from Guatemala.
En esta ocasión estoy acá para pedirles a los concejales de Los Ángeles que nos apoyen a un TPS para los guatemaltecos.
In this occasion, I'm here to request to the council members of the City of Los Angeles to support us with a TPS for the people from Guatemala.
Pienso que merecemos una digna derecho como para estar legalmente en este país. Nosotros no estamos aquí porque queremos estar. Estamos acá porque ha existido mucha falta de oportunidades en nuestros países.
Okay, so, yeah, so I think that we really deserve this right of dignity, so we can be here legally in this country. We are not here just because we want. We are here because we went through so many problems in our country.
Doig graz a Dios que, al estar aquí en este país, yo personalmente he logrado muchas oportunidades. Hoy en día soy actor y productor de cine. Manejo dos festivales de cine en el área de Los Ángeles, California. Pero en base a eso he visto que han habido muchas dificultades para poder seguir adelante y continuar con mi carrera.
Okay, so, yeah, so I'm thank God that I had so many opportunities in this country. As a matter of fact, I am an actor and I'm a producer, and I am managing two festivals of, movie festivals in California, and this is, but this is based on like a lot of challenges and difficulties. I can see that we are having so many problems.
Y por eso necesitamos que se apruebe el TPS para los guatemaltecos.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Muchas gracias.
So that's why we need to be approved, this proclamation.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Juana Calle, y soy originaria de Guatemala, de la comunidad Quiche.
Very good morning. My name is Juana Calle, and I'm originally from the Guatemaltecan people and from the Mayan people Quiche.
He vivido en los Estados Unidos por 30 años.
I've lived in the United States for 30 years.
Y pido el apoyo a los concejales de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles que se apruebe esta proclamación.
And I'm requesting the support of the council member of Los Angeles to approve this proclamation.
En apoyo una designación para el TPS guatemalteco.
Is supporting the designation for the TPS, for the Guatemaltecan TPS.
Como comunidad guatemalteca, como comunidad indígena maya, hemos sido desplazados de nuestras tierras y...
As a community, as like a Mayan community, we've been displaced from our own lands.
También hemos vivido lo que se llama el bullying en nuestra ciudad, en nuestra comunidad Guatemala.
And we've also had to endure what's called bullying in our own city, in our own city in Guatemala.
Por lo mismo es que pedimos el apoyo de ustedes, los concejales, que nos escuchen nuestra voz como emigrantes, como comunidad maya.
That's why we are requesting to you to listen to our voice, the voice of the Mayan community.
Le pido permiso que pueda decir unas palabras en Quiche diciendo lo mismo.
So I want to just request for permission to say a few words in Quiche, saying exactly the same thing.
Que catache, qanak, qatat, catache, qaconsejal, que ya, apoyo chaque. Thank you very much. We need your support for TPS for Guatemala. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Good morning. My name is Walter Batres. I'm the president of the Guatemalan Migrant Network. Today, we're here not only to ask you for your support, but to help us lead a movement within the cities of the United States, where the Guatemalans have been living for a long time. I came here as a dreamer in 1989, and I have been a great supporter for all the conditions of citizenship for this city especially, and for this country. And now, an American citizen with four children that were born here that are also American citizens and voting for this country. So, once again, we really need your support on this one, and we need a movement, especially from the greater city of Affilay, because this is where the most concentration of Guatemalans as citizens live right now. So we're really counting on you, and we hopefully will get a TPS for the Guatemalan community.
Thank you.
Hola, mi nombre es Pablo Garzona. Soy originario de Guatemala.
Hello, my name is Pablo Garzona, and I'm originally from Guatemala.
Soy de la comunidad artística guatemalteca aquí en Los Ángeles.
And I'm from the artistic community, Guatemaltecan community here in Los Angeles.
Estoy hoy aquí pidiendo un TPS para nuestra comunidad guatemalteca.
I am here today to request a TPS for our Guatemaltecan community.
A todos los concejales de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles.
To all the council members of the City of Los Angeles.
Sabemos que nuestro país está sufriendo, está desangrándose.
I, we know that our country is suffering, that is bleeding out.
Por desastres naturales.
Due to natural disasters.
Narcopolítica.
And nar- narcopolitics.
Y corrupción a todos niveles.
And corruption at all the different levels.
Esa es la razón porque en nuestra comunidad, las personas que no tienen documentos...
That is the reason why the undocumented people from our communities...
Ni pueden regresar a nuestro país, ni pueden también colaborar a sus comunidades.
Cannot go back to our country, and also they cannot help their communities.
Es necesario ahora que ustedes nos apoyen con este TPS, que ya es tiempo.
It is really necessary that you support us with this TPS, because it is already time.
Para el beneficio de toda nuestra comunidad guatemalteca aquí en Estados Unidos.
For the benefit of all our Guatemaltecan community here in the United States.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Muy buenos dias, mi nombre...
Sorry, sorry, just one moment, please.
Okay.
And there won't be any shouting out? There won't be any, you know, sending statements, you know, like that? Mr. Spindler, you're instructed to be quiet while other people are speaking. Go ahead, sir.
Okay.
Muy buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Gustavo Septimo.
Good morning to everybody. My name is Gustavo Septimo.
Tengo 35 años de vivir en Estados Unidos. Gracias a Dios vine legalmente y soy orgullosamente ciudadano.
I've been 35 years living in the United States, and thank God I came here legally and I am a citizen.
Tengo 50 años de ser artista, productor, y actualmente sigo vigente.
I am, for 50 years, I've been an artist, a producer, and I'm still working on this.
Y gracias a mi carrera me dado cuenta de la necesidad de mis hermanos de Guatemala.
Thanks to my own career, I've noticed, I've, I came aware of the needs of my brothers, of my community.
En vista de que los escenarios me han dado la oportunidad de escuchar la queja de nuestros hermanos.
Because being on the stage gave me the opportunity to listen to the complaints of our brothers from Guatemala.
Considero que así como a otros países se les ha dado la oportunidad del TPS, yo les pido, por favor, nos apoyen también a los guatemaltecos.
I think that as well as other countries being giving like a help of a TPS, I beg you that please support a TPS for the Guatemaltecs.
Agradezco a cada uno de ustedes, y en especial a Kevin De León por el apoyo que nos está brindando. Muchas gracias.
I say thank you to each of you, and especially to Kevin De León for the support that he is giving us. Thank you.
Thank you. Muchísimas gracias a todos ustedes. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Pumpkinhead, all the motherfucking items in general fucking comment.
Good morning. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Yes, thank you for starting the clock early, yes. So let's get to the tea time. Yes, golf. White, pasty, rich, Jew, fucking sport, fuck golf. And as we know, Buckethead, not to be confused with Pumpkinhead's brother, lobbied, I believe, the other day for these tea times. I hope he's a registered lobbyist. And what do we do here? We're having a black market. Why, what a racist name in 2024. To agendize this and call it a black market? Oh, that is disgusting. It should be called an illegal market. It should be called a underground market, not a black market. What a racist council this council is. Sitting there and defaming people who are black as being sordid somehow. That's where that term comes from. Did you know that? Shame on you, Nissus, for allowing this to happen. Do you blame Kevin? Oh, not in the least. He's innocent.
So, Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on general public comment. So please move on to the items.
Yes, you did. Number 10, asshole, yes. We have the indicted council member. Let's give my hand. Yes, that's right. Yes, still indicted, but passing motions on number 10. Letting East 50th Street? Well, that's a real shithole. Why are you holding up the rent from there? You should be glad the landlord provides keys and not cuffs. And then we have number 11? Let's see here. CD 11 and number 14. Tracy Park ripping off this California State Water Resources Control Board. You can wind up in prison for doing things like that. Shame on you, Tracy Beach, known as Tracy Park. $2,108 of theft being returned to Gavin Newsom, who eventually will become the president of the United States after all Biden is committed. And then we have number 15. Council District 10, Heather Hutt actually doing something for the people of K-Town. Oh, fuck, yeah. I can't believe it. She's going to give streetlights to Koreans in CD 10. And thank you, as Kevin comes near and supports my motion here, that we want streetlights in CD 1. We want streetlights in CD 14, because there's no goddamn fucking streetlights anywhere else. But Heather wants to give you streetlights. On the other hand, she's running against that Korean lady and might get defeated. So again, yes, it's an election year, but we support it. And of course, number 16? Fuck number 16. Van Nuys Boulevard is a shithole. I say tear the whole thing down and turn it into a homeless center.
So, Speaker, you have an additional minute for the items, because you already used your one minute for general public comment on item number five. So if you'd like to speak to the items for an additional minute, you may continue.
Oh, man, they're going to rip me off on my general comment, so we have to go to the FF. Okay, here we go. We'll play your game the way you want to. Item 19, fucking consideration of fucking motion, fucking relative to fucking amending the fucking Los Angeles fucking municipal code to fucking remove a fucking clause fucking regarding the fucking installation of a fucking metal plaque, or plate, on the individual fucking letters or figures of a fucking sidewalk.
So, Speaker, this is not an opportunity for you to read the agenda to us. This is an opportunity for you to provide comment to this body.
Walk of fucking fame I'm fucking talking about. Fucking requesting, fucking begging, the fucking city attorney to fucking... Fucking requesting, fucking begging the fucking city attorney to fucking prepare a fucking corner.
So Speaker, you've been asked to provide an actual comment and not simply read the agenda, so you forfeited the rest of your speaking time. And for members of the public, just, or for the record, Mr. Spindler, your time is expired. So please vacate the podium so that we can move on. All right, Mr. Spindler, you're instructed, you're instructed to sit down and be quiet and not disrupt this meeting. I'm instructing you to sit down right now and be quiet. And for the record, we have explained which item, stated which items are open for public comment multiple times during this meeting. In fact. All right, Mr. Spindler has continued to disrupt this meeting, he's ordered excluded, pursuant to rule twelve. Mr. Spindler, leave the meeting immediately and quietly, you're disrupting the meeting despite my instructions, leave the meeting right now. Wayne Spindler, pursuant to rule twelve, you were instructed to leave this meeting.
You don't have a hall line.
The entire city council is waiting while Wayne Spindler is being excluded from this meeting and continuing to shout and disrupt the meeting so we can't proceed.
You need to go back to our floor or you don't have a hall line.
Hurry up, we're waiting for you, get out of our meeting.
You're in front of the clock.
So Mr. Spindler is a regular attendant, attendant at these meetings, uh, and he is well aware that the agendas say which items have already had their public hearings and item number five has already had their public hearing. So sergeants, please make a note, Mr. Spindler has been excluded pursuant to rule twelve and he'll be subject to rule seven as well. Uh, all right. With that, we've exhausted all comment here in the council chambers, so we'll go now to public comment on the phone, first caller, please.
Yeah, it's, it's Eric Previn.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on the available items and also a uh, a general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items, that's items ten through nineteen and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay, well nineteen for starters, here's Mr. Harris Dawson, uh whipping together a quick six hundred K for a group called uh Ward Economic Development, sounds very professional. Only fifty thousand goes to pay for them and then they hire temporary workers to the tune of like almost four, so half a million dollars for six months of workers, what are they doing? Well, they're assisting with the safe passage program, that is, sounds like very expensive crossing cards. I don't quite get it, but I, I do wonder about one detail, which is ninety thousand dollars in administrative fees. Hello? Ninety thousand dollars, that's a fifteen percent administrative fee. Am I, am I losing it? Is that something that people get? Fifteen percent on top of all the sal, it's all salary. Well, good luck with that one. Hutt is upgrading the streetlights in her area as the election comes close and she's trying to do something to show the older Koreans, she's in their camp, so she's got the senior center, but it's only three thousand dollars. Uh, if you pay attention to the rates and the grim report from Department of Public Works about how it's nine hundred dollars for the cable and eight hundred dollars for the bulb and six hundred dollars, we're, you know, the, the idea that we're gonna replace our lights in the city with this budget problem as Bloomingfield is sobbing quietly in the corner about the rackup. We, we sit in the dark, we sit in the dark, good luck, Hutt, I hope you win or lose, I hope you lose. Uh, by the way, nice, nice to put on the agenda recording, you're so brave, the two thousand one hundred and eight dollar of Cal State Water Control Board grant. Lovely, very nice. And then shut up on everything else, right? I lo, I thought it was cool to have uh Miles L. Mac McGregor properly end over right into City Hall so that everybody could see that he's a player, player.
So Speaker, this is not on the agenda, you can speak to it during general if you'd like, but if you'd like to continue with the agenda items, please continue with those.
No, I am still on the, wait a minute, I thought that the Cal State Water, were you following along, Groot? Groot, were you following along or no?
Speak, Mr. Previn, this is not question and answer time, it's your time to speak.
I'm gonna have to see Groot after class, but I'll get back to item number sixteen, thank you. Thank you for finally acknowledging that Groot needs to be replaced. I think we've all come to the same conclusion and I appreciate your leadership once and for all, especially for your self-management style where you are your own greatest critic.
Speaker, this is not on the agenda, so this is your last warning.
And what happens after the warning, I go to general?
Yes, you can go to general. Yes, you have a minute for general public comment.
Okay, let's do that, thank you. And I wanna thank McCoster for stepping up from municipal golf the week after his brother uh stepped up from municipal golf. It's such a nice thing and I love municipal golf at like Weddington where Nithya Ramon's father plays tennis, but then unfortunately Nithya Ramon was busy asserting jurisdiction up in the Walnut Grove on Laurel Canyon when all of the people of Studio City showed up one morning and clung to the fence hoping, hoping and praying that Studio City's heart and soul, the lungs of that great community would be left alone and Harvard Westlake would come to their senses involuntarily. But no, now Arwon is suing Sportsman's Lodge, so I hope you're happy about that one, we're gonna get you all, all of you will be rounded up by the local community in Studio City and aired out for what you are, which is sellout. There's absolutely no reason to benefit the billionaires over the people who live in the, in the area in Studio City, there's no reason to do that.
Speaker, your time is expired. Next caller, please.
All right, so um, I wanna talk about the um fake progressives on this council, we have um Yunitis Hernandez and Ugo Soto Martinez, um, you know, Yunitis and Ugo spent all of yesterday killing the ethics reform, um, I wonder why that is. Um, you know, Yunitis has now been um recent, last weekend held an event with um Kevin De León, um, yeah, we thought, you, you thought we wouldn't find out about that. But yeah, Yunitis held a joint event with Kevin De León last weekend. Why, why did you do that, Yunitis? I thought you were um trying to get him out of office, you're now holding events with him? Why? Um, you racist, you know he needs to be off the council, why are you holding events with him? Um, and you both, you and Ugo killed the ethics reform, you know, watered it down to the point that it's basically nothing now, why did you do that? Um, you know, even Paul wrote it.
Speaker, your time is expired. Thank you very much, next caller, please.
Good morning, this is Sean from Miller Park.
Hi Sean, which items would you like to speak on?
How you doing? Item fifteen, item ten and general public comment.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment, please begin with the items.
Item ten, item four, for the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Item fifteen, I'm for, for street lighting, uh, that's it for the, for the, for the items. General public comment.
General public comment?
Yeah. What the fuck is happening to LA, to, to Metro? I've been hearing on the news it's two or three more incidents during the past forty-eight hours. What the fuck is going on? That's why I'm not downtown at City Hall for a little while. Somebody told me not to ride Metro, I can only ride in the, in the belly. Man, what the hell is going on? Kevin Barker is pissed off, I'm pissed off too. Metro's not gonna get it together, they should get the hell out. There's another bus coming to replace it. I'm sick of Metro.
Thank you, next caller, please.
Yes, um, I'd like to speak on a general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute, please begin.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, city council, um, my question, this is for Monica Rodriguez. Monica Rodriguez, um, I'm calling from the Southern Tahanga uh neighborhood where I uh reside at. My question to you is, what happened to the Fourth of July fireworks show that took place every Fourth of July at Virgil Hill High School? My family has attended the Virgil Hill High School Fourth of July fireworks show that was uh done by professional firework, uh pyrotechnic people. And I've noticed that um, that, that the Fourth of July fireworks show has been discontinued and I'd like to know what's the reason behind it. Um, I'd like to know if you uh discontinued the Fourth of July fireworks show from taking place at Virgil Hill High School. I'd like to get a response from that, thank you, bye-bye.
Uh, general public, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment, please begin.
Thank you. Shout out to Brock Landers. Hey, don't worry about Candido, the problem with Candido, we all know.
So you need to speak to the council about items that are within the jurisdiction of the council, not talk to other speakers.
I said general public.
Yes, but you have to address this body, general. This is, sorry, this is not the time for performance art, it's the time to speak to the city council about things that are within the jurisdiction of the city council, so please do so.
Look at your fucking face, fucking don't cut me off.
Okay, sorry, your time is expired. Uh, move on to the next caller, please.